We'll have a discussion on the proposed moratorium on battery energy storage systems. And we have a new item added to the agenda, a vote to accept the resignation of Wally Hursey as the Planning Board representative to the Community Preservation Committee, with the appointment of a new Community Preservation Committee representative. Right? And allow the town plan to update, then over to business, and then attorney. So, has anyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of November 10th?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions or comments?
No.
If not, we have a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second that.
A second, all in favor? Very good, okay. So, everyone wants to start with your update, or you?
Yes, I can do that. So, sorry, bear with me for a second. Get my piles back in appropriate order. So, I guess the first thing is Trail Dusters Restaurant has closed already, unfortunately. I'm not sure why they were not successful in closed, but there is a new tenant going into that space already. So, where Trail Dusters Restaurant was a 54-seat full-service restaurant, there's a new restaurant, Manja Beni, which will actually be a 35-seat restaurant that will take its place, and a portion of the space will actually be used for a deli and dry goods Italian market in there as well. So, there's no need for any additional parking or no changes to the inside. Obviously, they'll need to get their own board of health permits, but it didn't trigger anything with us since we had just approved a restaurant there. So, wish them well, they will need to come in and get a signed permit with us. They are across the street this evening with the board, with the select board, applying for a liquor license or beer and wine license for the location. So, just wanted to let you know.
Yes, so any of the changes like inside the building where like, they might take out the lungar and put other things in.
Yes.
Really doesn't affect us, or it has nothing to do with the site plan.
Right.
That's why, you're really going to give away the site plan?
No.
Because there's really no change in what's already approved.
Right.
As far as parking spaces and everything.
Absolutely. Yep.
And so, any other questions or comments about that? Good, okay.
All right. And then, we will, weather permitting, be having a housing forum at Town Hall tomorrow night and Saturday morning, and this will be to kick off our buy-down program, which is being funded through the Community Preservation Fund. And this is an opportunity for two families or individuals to receive up to $100,000 for first-time home buyers to purchase a home in the town of Sturbridge. And there are income guidelines, our income limitations, and also home price limitations. All the information is on the website. It looks like the weather is turning in our favor, maybe a little messy, and hopefully we will be at Town Hall from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. tomorrow night and 10:00 to noon on Saturday. If anyone is interested or thinks that they may qualify and cannot make it to either forum, please contact the Planning Department at (508) 347-2508 and set an appointment with April Griffin. She'll be happy to walk you through the program and the application process as well. Great opportunity, again, please can come if you can, and if you cannot, we are here to help you. The income limitations, just to give people an idea, it's 80% of the adjusted median income, so for a one-person household, it's $69,850 annually. All the way up to a six-person household would be $1,5750 annually. And then, kind of mid-range is three-person household, the income limitation is $89,800 annually. So, it's taken us a long time to get this program approved by the state, very excited to kick this off, and great opportunity. So, hope to see lots of people there.
Very good, and it was a lot of work that we need to do. And there seemed to be a pretty good write-up on Facebook somebody.
Yeah, some, a bit of negative feedback on, you know, where was the funding coming from? So, it is coming from community preservation funds, and it is the amount that's earmarked for community housing, which must be used for affordable community housing. But there was some very positive feedback as well, so thankfully for that. So, so again, please attend. And then, maybe, just got lines crossed, so maybe we'll do CPC, and then if not, I can present this plan.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just in case they went to the wrong place, I'd hate to have them. So, Wally submitted his resignation. He's the Planning Board liaison for the Community Preservation Committee, and his resignation is effective today, Monday, December 1st, 2024. The Community Preservation Committee sometimes will meet quite often, like right now, they're reviewing requests for the annual town meeting. So, I know they have a meeting next Monday, for example, and I think another meeting in January, and other times they'll go, you know, a good, good amount of time without meeting. Is that fair, Wally?
Usually after the town meeting, they'll meet a few times, and it's usually around May, and we didn't meet again until this past three weeks ago. So, for like, May throughout the summer and then into the late fall, there was no meetings at all.
All right. So, we do need a Planning Board representative on this committee, so if we have a volunteer, is there anyone that would be willing to do this? And it plays a very important role, it's reviewing the requests for, you know, open space, historic preservation, housing, recreation, those types of uses, and it's making sure that, you know, we're kind of allocating funds for appropriate purposes under the law and making recommendations to town meeting.
Would anyone present have some interest in this?
I want to, but I just can't.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
I saw you had kind of.
I know, honestly, I enjoyed working with the CPC before, and I just, I can't give up anymore nights.
Oh, that's right.
No, I certainly understand. Anyone else here that might be interested? I'm not, I guess we'll see what Taylor has to say if he has any.
Okay. All right.
And then, does it have to be a member of the Planning Board, or can we point someone else?
No, it has to be a member of the Planning Board. So, we absolutely need a member of the board to step up. This is very important.
Okay.
When is the next CPC meeting now that we're down a member?
Monday.
Okay, we have a week to figure it out.
Well, not really, because you have to vote that person.
Yeah, we have to.
So, we have to figure it out right now?
This would be on the second.
Got it, okay.
It would be helpful if we could vote somebody.
I feel like Taylor probably has similar availability to me.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that, true.
You think he has availability, is that what?
No, I think he has similar availability to himself. We're at similar life stages, so.
I would definitely agree with that.
And when do they meet, Mondays?
Mondays.
And they don't conflict with this meeting?
Well, sometimes they do, but I worked, so we worked around it. So, you'll remember, I asked if you could change your meeting schedule, and it was because of, to try to get around that CPC schedule.
Okay. Well, it looks like there's nobody else, so I guess I will volunteer to account.
Okay. Could somebody please?
I make a motion that Charlie Blanchard is appointed as the CPC representative for the Planning Board.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Charlie, you accept that nomination?
I do.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you for volunteering. We can revisit it next year, you know what I mean, so.
Right.
Right, you say?
Yeah, I'm sure we can.
Okay.
All right, so why don't we move on to the site plan thing?
All right, so, this is for 441 Main Street, and you'll see there's a proposed carport shown in red on the site plan there. And in the process of review, it was determined that the proposed carport is within the Army Corps of Engineers Flowage Easement. So, although there's a garage there, and there's some propane storage tanks and some other things within the flowage easement, and even though the carport would be set on concrete blocks, and they would leave some openings for floodwaters to flow through, we were, we met on-site this morning and learned that their easement, they need to get approval from Army Corps to be able to set that within their easement. It didn't appear that it would be a problem, but it is a process that they need to go through. So, my recommendation is that the board waive site plan approval and allow the carport to be placed there pending Army Corps of Engineers acceptance of the location.
Yeah, I met with Jean, you know, in the conservation agent on the site today, it certainly has really no effect.
Oh, here they are. I just presented it all for you.
We were across the street.
I just said that.
So, we're sitting over there, I'm like, this isn't right.
We haven't called this yet.
You can sit at where the microphone is, but I just kind of gave an overview of your project. So, this is Mike Loring and Ed Colnacy.
Yes.
Sorry, everyone.
Sorry, yeah.
Not a problem.
We're sitting there just kind of looking around.
They read the agenda, and we didn't hear ourselves on the agenda, and we said, it's a problem.
Wrong place.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, so Jean just went over the whole thing, and the idea would be that since it has really no effect on our site plan, we'd be happy to waive it, subject to the approval of the Army Corps when you work with them. So, does anyone have any questions or anything before that, unless there's anything you'd like to add? I mean, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, yep, yep. No, I don't, I don't, if you're all comfortable with Jean's explanation, then I'm all set.
Okay, so we have a motion then to waive site plan approval of this, and with the stipulation that it can't be constructed until it gets approved through the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yep.
That's a motion then?
So moved.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, we do.
Got to travel too far.
Sorry, I think you're waiting. Sorry, we've got to exercise across the street.
Yeah, right.
Before you head out, could you just sign the sign-in sheet that's right up there?
Sure.
Thank you.
Of course.
And good luck with the project.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay.
That might have set a record for shortest applicant at the table. Awesome. Yeah, that was quick.
Well, we were right about their location anyway.
Yeah, my bad, so. So, the other, the only other thing we have is this discussion on the proposed moratorium for battery energy storage systems. Jean was talking about this earlier, around the time of our special town meeting, and we might just go through it and explain while we're doing this.
Yeah, so, you know, as you know, it's, every town needs to have a bylaw for battery energy storage systems, and this is not to be confused with the new rules coming out for large-scale solar photovoltaic with the concurrent process. This is something that, you know, we kind of took a wait-and-see approach because we really thought the, you know, maybe the state would kind of tighten things up and say, you know, you can't be serious that we have to have these everywhere in the state. And they didn't, and in fact, what they did is say, no, actually, it's really, it's a Dover Amendment use now, so it's being treated as, you know, education religious type uses where basically allowed. And so, there was kind of a lot of talk on the mass planners lists or from some towns who have a bylaw in place and are getting buried with applications. Blandford's a good example of one such town. They have so many applications before them that they had, actually had to form an energy subcommittee of the Planning Board. They are just absolutely buried with solar and battery energy storage applications. And some towns were saying, you know, maybe, maybe we should put in a moratorium, you know, and then, I think it was Charlton said, oh, last time I followed Sturbridge's lead and, you know, when they did the moratorium on solar, and we did a moratorium. And then, so at special town meeting, I spoke to Attorney Eichman and said, you know, is this something we should be considering? You know, we don't yet have a bylaw, I really kind of thought things would change by now. I know I need to write a bylaw, it won't be popular, but, you know, I'm, I plan to start working on that once I finish up the open space plan. And he said, well, you know, I think it couldn't hurt, and, you know, you could do that. Well, in the next couple of days, we started getting a lot of feedback that the Attorney General's office was in no way going to approve a moratorium. And there's many decisions on the municipal law unit of the AG's office where they've denied moratoriums, and yet towns are still doing it, saying basically, well, from the day I put the ad in the paper, it kind of puts a freeze, so what do I have to lose? Kind of this, you know, the old belt and suspenders approach. So, we probably know it will be denied, is it a waste of time to do it, or should we do it anyway, kind of thing? And should we do it, and then at the same time be drafting a bylaw anyway? And if we get it done in time, then maybe we can have it ready for this annual, but with the quick timelines, who knows? So, I guess, you know, I could probably go either way. Talking with Charlie earlier, he's like, I'm not sure it makes a lot of sense because we know it's going to get denied, so I guess I kind of wanted to put it out there for discussion tonight.
One of the things on that, we've seen something earlier around the time this first came up for discussion, I figured it was town it was, but they were denied, but it seemed like they were primarily denied because they already had a bylaw in place allowing this thing for a period of time.
And then they had the moratorium.
Yes.
And so, I thought that would be the difference. And so, our point is simply the way we've done it with other things like this, like we need time to study it. But, now what happened is, there's a whole list of these things that came through this small town administrators association, they had all these things. In reading through them, they've been pretty consistent on the idea that yes, for general things in zoning, you know, the town has the rights to do that, to say you want to study health, safety, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But, as Jean said, some of this Dover Amendment, the idea that there's been a determination there's renewable energy is really important, is in the best interest of, you know, the community and the country and everything, puts it to a different level. And they cite something else that really, basically, at least on two of the ones that I did read today, it talks about the fact that just saying we're going to do this study because of, you know, the safety and so forth isn't enough, unless we were to say we're very concerned about a certain thing here that needs more research, which we don't really have any information on now, it really is very unlikely that they will approve this. In fact, it's pretty guaranteed, I've read, you know, two or three of them with worrying the same way we had it, and they've denied them all, recognizing that on a lot of zoning issues, the town does have the right to do that, but this raises it to a different level. And just saying that doesn't justify a moratorium for this type of.
Unless we had a specific calculated concern.
Yeah, I don't know what it would be, but it would have to be something that would be much more specific as to what we're concerned about because of these battery storage systems. You know, not just that you would have a bad impact on quality of life or health or, you know, it's just too general, they won't approve for that.
And that was something, I didn't want to belabor this, but for the benefit of anybody joining this conversation, could we speak a little bit to why we think we need a moratorium and a bylaw, and the risks associated with these elements, and what we're actually talking about?
I, we need to have a bylaw because there's been recent case law to treat battery energy storage systems as a protected use, what they call a Dover Amendment use. So, for example, governmental uses, educational uses, and religious uses are what they consider Dover Amendment uses, which means they have to be allowed in your community.
And these battery energy storage systems are large grid scale?
Yeah.
They're big, big things. They're not if I get like a little thing in my house.
That's correct. Those are, right, they're not talking about the accessory ones like over Planet Fitness.
Yeah, charging stations, that's not what we're talking about.
Right, when we did the accessory battery storage for the salt, the rooftop solar over there.
There's some like industrial or grid scale.
They really are. And not only that, when I was in Southbridge, they have, they have a proposal for one of these things, and it's really big. And one of the big issues you have there is fire protection, and this required actually a larger water main to be brought up to it, but quite a distance. So, things like that on the scale are the kind of things you're going to be faced with. It's not, it's not really a small thing, and it will have an impact. Now, all these things I think can be managed, but again, it's not just a.
They have to be considered, just like the lithium ion batteries in the cars, they take forever to burn out, you have to water them for hours and hours if you have a big grid scale thing.
Yeah, you have a big scale, you know, it, what is the best location? How close should that be to a major development, things like that? Those are, I think, the things that would have to be determined.
Right, so you have to think about reasonable setbacks and things like that. For instance, a good portion of our community is in a groundwater protection district. You know, I think, in my opinion, it's perfectly reasonable to prohibit them in groundwater protection districts.
Those heavy metals.
Right, so those are things that we would want to make sure we incorporate into a bylaw.
I mean, you know, if we redrafted it for things like that, you know, I guess we'd have to put a lot more into it, you know, in order to present it, and it still might be, you know, turned down. But I think.
Oh, for the moratorium? I think it's, you know, we put presently, the town has no zoning bylaw expressly governing placement and use of these systems. I think that's the only thing where you hang your hat on.
Right.
We don't have a bylaw, we want time to study it and draft a bylaw.
And one of the things I read, though, it seemed like they had wording in here somewhere about the fact that if there had been more, you know, specific reason for this moratorium, that they wouldn't consider it. That's what I was trying to get at, that if we, if we said that we were concerned about that, but I think you'd have to bring in a lot of data that we really don't have to put into this to say that this is what we want to study. I think it'd be, you know, much more work than we'd want to put into this to make it to that level that they would even consider it, because I think that based on the wording we have now, it's pretty clear that, as they've done with every other community, they're just going to say that it doesn't meet, you know, the standard of being able to put a moratorium in place for this, because the potential damage to this idea that we need to promote renewable energy, you know, is overridden, you know, by that, so. Anyway, I, you know, I think, really, Robin kind of left it up in the air, she thinks it may still be a good idea to go forward with this.
She's, yeah, she still thinks that, you know, it has the merit in moving forward and seeing what happens, at least we.
I guess the only merit that we might see from moving forward, if we're convinced that they're really going to deny it, would be giving us a window between the time we advertise it and the town meeting, or the time they reject it.
Where we kind of have that freeze.
To say that we'd be able to freeze anything there, but we don't really know anything that's coming in during that two or three month period anyway.
Right.
I mean, that two or three month period is a little different than having a moratorium through the end of the year, but longer based on how long it took, so.
Now, what, question is, what drives, you were mentioning, was it Oxford? As a community that had all these.
Blandford?
Blandford.
Blandford.
Open land, basically.
So, any available open land sold?
You're saying we're seeing a lot of them in Western Mass, where there's a lot of open farmland that hasn't been developed, so.
So, but what's driving it? Is people looking at this as an opportunity to be able to develop this and utilize this land?
Proximity to the grid, proximity to three-phase, open land, you know, people that want to sell their land or lease their land. I, you know, I live in Palmer, I have, I bought an old farm, I have 65 acres. In the past three weeks, I've probably received four offers in the mail, unsolicited, for people that want to do large-scale things on my property.
And this.
So, I'm guessing that's happening all over the place.
And these funds are coming from federal or state grants to?
You know, I don't know of any federal incentives any longer to do this, so I'm not really sure where they're getting the funds. I think maybe it's just that lucrative, I don't know.
Yeah.
I kind of thought maybe it would slow down a little bit when a lot of the federal incentives went away. You know, perhaps these are projects that have been in the pipeline for some time that I'm seeing, you know, out in Western Mass. I look at OCAM, they came to the select board here and asked for support to oppose, you know, the project in their town. They had a bylaw in place, and the proponent didn't like some of the bylaw and went to the state to override the bylaw. So, that's what they're faced with now. I should also say there are three different various forms of legislation pending at the state level to impose a statewide moratorium, because some of the legislators feel that, you know, towns are kind of getting buried with these things, and that, you know, we don't know enough about safety and other impacts, so.
Jean, could you explain exactly what the battery storage facilities, what the, what the purposes and what, what are they for? Are they to take power from the grid, store it until needed?
Yeah.
So, if we lose power on the grid, you have power reserved in the, in the batteries for emergency purposes?
Mostly from solar.
Salt, yeah.
Well, it's to even out the use, so the sun doesn't always shine.
Right.
So, you have some, or is it a make-stay power system, and then releases it when the sun doesn't shine?
It can be stored. And not be used in the.
Or releases it at high peak usage times and things like that.
That's, that's what I thought, I just wanted something specific. I do know that I, I, in Midway, they have built something recently, they're in the middle of building this enormous plant with lots of stuff tied into the grid, and it's surrounded by very, very high-paneled walls, and I believe this is on the same thing. But I, that's, thank you for answering the question, I do appreciate that.
They look like big trailer truck bodies almost.
You can't see them from the street, they're right on the edge of Route 109, so you really can't see them anymore now that they have the huge, these artificial panels up that are 20 feet tall.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, there's a lot of residential houses across the street, but there ain't much open space either in Midway any longer. Yeah, so how much impact it would have on our community would depend on how much available, open space is available, how much.
Right, and then we can't really.
Other infrastructure.
Right, and we can't really like zone it out, so if we create a bylaw that's so narrow that it doesn't allow it, you know, anywhere, like maybe only on 1% or 2% of your land, that will be denied as well, so.
I think the biggest thing would be that we certainly wouldn't think we would be able to or should allow them in the groundwater protection areas. I mean, that's a certain thing, so that's one thing. Then the other big thing I think would be, you know, the setbacks. As you say, if it takes a period of time, you know, to get these fires out and so forth, you know, you don't want to have it right next to a large residential area or school or something like that.
We probably also don't want it surrounded with a lot of evergreens or stuff like that. You want some separation distances, but you want some screening for the visibility so we don't all have to look at a bunch of trailer truck bodies parked around, so it's stuff to be considered.
Yeah, so, you know, there's a lot to consider, and I, you know, I think certainly we can craft a bylaw, and like I said, I did receive preliminary approval on the open space plan. There are five sections that I have to rewrite, so I'm doing, once we get through the housing forum, I'm doing that, and then I will turn full attention to this, but this is something I looked at as kind of a belt and suspenders approach, you know, like something to do.
Do we need to decide tonight whether to move forward or not for your timing or anything else?
Probably, because by the time, it would still, you'd, you'd vote to be the petitioner if you wanted to move forward with this, it would go to the select board, they would vote to pass back to start hearing, we wouldn't even be able to hold the hearing until January, town meeting deadline's fast approaching. This is my dilemma with trying to get a bylaw ready.
So, if the town administrators think that it is still proceeding, why don't we go ahead and vote to move to the select board and let them decide what to do with it?
We're talking about proceeding with, pursuing the moratorium?
Yeah.
So, we would recommend it to the select board, then they would pursue the moratorium?
Yeah, then they could take up the same debate.
Well, you would actually vote to serve as petitioner for the proposed bylaw amendment, which would be the moratorium, and forward it to the select board as required by Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, to begin the public hearing process, and then we would hold a public hearing. I do have to define the large-scale battery energy storage systems too, according to town council.
I mean, keeping in mind that based on what we've seen from what the AG has done over the past year or so on these things.
It will be.
They are not going to approve it.
Right.
I'm not sure how much effort this moratorium will take, but we're talking about engaging other parties, and it might be worth just spending the time working on the bylaw instead.
I agree, I agree with that. I think it's six and one half versus the other, but I think that we're going to end up in the same place at the end anyway, we're going to have to do a bylaw. So, I think that moratorium is just putting off the inevitable, and what is it really going to give us besides?
It sounded like it might buy two to three months to work on the bylaw, but I don't know if it's a lot of effort.
No, it should be working on the bylaw. The only difference would be if somebody applied, they would not be able to.
Right, and how much disruption is this going to cause?
Be applied, right? I mean, they, what happens during that period when we have filed for, you know, studying the moratorium, having a moratorium? If somebody applies after we advertise that we are having a hearing, move forward with the moratorium?
Well, we, we say that it's froze, but if they challenge it and say it's a Dover Amendment use, I don't know, we'll see.
Right, but if they didn't, I mean, is there like a period of time where they, we wouldn't have to accept applications until we get the bylaw approved, or? wouldn't have to accept applications until we get the bylaw approved or?
Well, theoretically, from the time that we advertise in the paper, we could say that we've advertised a moratorium, we're not accepting an application. But if it's somebody that says, oh, sorry, no, it's a Dover amendment use, you can't do that.
Right, so all I'm getting at is that's the only little bit of protection we seem to have by moving forward with a moratorium during the period.
I mean, unlikely anybody's coming forward, would be coming forward until spring if it, at all, right? I mean, so also one of those things where it's, maybe the moratorium goes through and we're fine for a few months anyways and there's zero impact, so we don't know what our impact is.
Does the moratorium need to be approved by the AG or is it only-
Yeah, that's the whole idea. The AG's rejected it all.
So it would never really be in place, it would get to their office and then be shot down most likely? It's not that it would be in place until challenged by an applicant?
No.
But they're going to do it-
That's the town, they would have to vote to accept it.
Yeah.
And then we would send that article onto the AG's office with all the other articles that voted, they, they're all on them. Some of these, you know, they had other sections of a bylaw, you know, take control and pass of solar projects, and those were passed. It was just the moratorium on some of these that they denied. So that was the big thing and what we're really looking for, we know we don't have a bylaw, we know we're going to be working on a bylaw. The only thing we're looking for is the moratorium. But again, from this really substantial track record from the AG's office, based on the way we'd present this moratorium, it's no different from what other people have asked for and they have been rejected, so.
So if we, if we, what would be difference, the end result with the bylaw as we're going to, versus said boilerplate sort of bylaw that maybe other communities are doing? How would we be able to tune our bylaw and what gain are we going to get out of tuning it or writing it in such a way that we feel that it's more balanced? Are we trying to get something that-
Right now, we have nothing right now, so we need to craft one. I do have a state model, a final state model is supposed to be available the end of this month or January, so we, and then we also have, Janay's been searching other towns and putting together what other towns have. So really, you know, pretty quickly, I could start to put together a draft, we could set up a working group of planning board members, doesn't have to be the entire board, we could have, you know, a few of you that are available and interested, want to work on something and we could, you know.
And this would be probably out of the scope of the Dover.
No, I mean, keeping in mind the Dover amendment, but you can regulate things like, you know, bulk density setbacks. I mean, it's pretty clear what we can do. You know, we can look at environmental impact, so groundwater protection, wetlands. I think, you know, wetlands would be regulated under conservation anyway with any placement of these, but, you know, FEMA flood zones, things like that.
And these are considered structures which we probably have bylaw framework for, this would be-
They are structures and so it would fall under that, but we need to think about, you know, where are they going to be allowed? Is it going to be an overlay district? Is it going to be allowed in a certain district? You know, where will it be excluded from? You know, like groundwater protection district, that kind of thing, so, yeah.
If, we, we have to the moratorium and it goes to the AG's office, before we even do that, it has to be approved for the moratorium at town meeting, correct?
Right.
And that's April 28th, right, or thereabouts?
It is.
So we, we've got five months or actually four months, probably five months to go there, so we have that much time there. So in the meantime, when it is voted at the town meeting and maybe thereafter, I guess we would apply to this AG. So what is the time between sending it off, the application for the moratorium to the AG office and then having them refuse it would be a period of what, just?
They have 90 days.
90 days, they'll probably do it sooner than that probably because-
They usually do, they usually do.
Yeah, so we have, so we've got five months here and we're looking to get another 90 days on top of that, but probably be much sooner than that, especially since we're getting down to the wire here. So I'm thinking that maybe we get another, another month, another four weeks out of that, or maybe another five weeks out of that, so.
Maybe, right.
So I'm thinking we have six months. And then when you refuse the moratorium, then you have to have that bylaw in place, ready and ready to go. So either six months with the moratorium or six months without the moratorium, we got the time in there that we're going to have to come up with something, so I-
Oh, yeah, absolutely, we need to work on it now.
There's always this, I, I, there's always the possibility they could approve it, so I don't, I don't know that there's any harm in going forward. I, from my point of view on this, I guess I'm, go forward moratorium, they don't approve it, fine, we work on the bylaw in the meantime. If, if we have the bylaw done before the town meeting, we pull it and push the bylaw and we're done. Or it takes longer, maybe they approve, maybe they don't. Either way, we put it out there.
And I, and I agree, I do agree, I'm just trying to get a timeline of exactly what had to be done, what, when, but I, I agree with the president, just one of those things, just take, take care of the whole thing and do it both at the same time, but work on the bylaw now. And I'm willing to come in and help out with anything that has to be done, you know, you